The red will be a hard stop. Each of you will have three minutes for your introductory statement and one minute for your closing. All candidates will be asked the same questions and each will have a minute and a half per question. So I'm also going to go through, not as technical as yours, Dr. Pekati, but some technical things about our board, just so that you know. We are going to be voting next Tuesday, the 16th, here, from noon to nine, in the middle school auditorium. And the vacancies are as follows. For the expiration of the three-year term of Rodney George, we have Rodney, Tim, and Shay. For the expiration of the three-year term of Robert DeBreyer, we have Steve, Jared, and Bob. So you can kind of see that they're arrayed based on the two voting spots you'll have next week. So everyone who's running is here. And as far as the school board goes, all five seats are going to be, as always, at large, and then the board will internally elect their president and vice president. So we're going to encourage the candidates to respond to any themes that do not get covered tonight from the questions that we received throughout the remaining week in their own campaign material. And we're all going to stay after, including the PTA. So come and ask any additional questions that you might have. Now, I'm going to hand it over to Sharon Knight, who is our moderator, and she's going to go through those seven questions that our regional PTA selected.
I just wanted to welcome everybody, let you know that I too served on the school board many, many years ago. I thank the PTA for hosting this for all of us. And I'm recently retired, four days as your elected town clerk. And Rodney, Rodney, you are up.
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Rodney George. I am the current president on the school board. I've had the honor of being president for the last 19 years. My bio has some additional stuff, so I'll cover it. I came to Avon in my sophomore year of high school. After graduating, I enlisted in the U.S. Army and was stationed overseas during the tail end of the Vietnam era. I came home, married my wife, who is a long time, or Evanite, Donna. We together built our own house on Reed Street. We have two grown daughters, two grandchildren who are in Avon. One is a senior and one is an eighth grader. Prior to my school board service, I've been giving back to the community my entire adult life. I've been on the planning board. I was elected to the village board and deputy, as deputy mayor. I've served 15 years on the Avon ambulance as an EMT and instructor. I am a member and a past commander of the American Legion, a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm also a proud rootarian. I'm serving, this would be my ninth term that I am running for. I would like to continue collaborating with the current Board of Education to provide the highest quality pass education possible for our students that our community can support and afford. Also, I want to continue working with the board to manage our financial stability. In 1999, when I came on a board, there was literally no reserves, no savings account. Unlike now, you get training, we had no training on, on school boards, financial, so on, but we quickly learned that we had nothing. We essentially were going paycheck to paycheck, or in school, you might say, state aid payment to state aid payment. Over the past 25 years, the board and the administrations throughout the 25 years, we were able to create reserves, several of them, and continue to finance those and keep them to today's equivalent of being financially stable throughout all of our reserves. Some of those that may not recall, when our pool wall, when our pool wall fell down, well, let me go pass Adam, I have 30 seconds. I also want to continue mentoring as a, as needed to our currently new, new board members and superintendents, and I would like to remain on the NISBA school board as a added resource on the state where I have direct contact with our state and.
Tim, you are next.
By asking all of you to remember that we are not political candidates and we are not running for political office. This is an election to choose two candidates who will best represent our school, our community, and the values they're both built upon. You should choose the candidates who are best qualified to lead and represent our school and community during a time when those qualifications have never been more important. Evaluate each of us based on merit, character, experience, and on our commitment to the Avon Central School District and the Avon community. As a member of the Board of Education here at Avon, my focus will be to best serve the students, the faculty and staff, and the integrity of education. That doesn't mean that I think we should be spending more money per student than every other school in the county, but I don't think we should be at the bottom of the county in spending either. It doesn't mean that I think we have to have the highest paid teachers in the county, but if our teacher salaries aren't at least competitive, we're going to lose great teachers and discourage great teachers from coming to Avon. I have 23 years of experience as a teacher that predates the pandemic, to no fault of our district, but rather as a result of simply adhering to the protocols with regard to the lockdown and reopening of all the schools. All schools across the country, to varying degrees, are seeing enormous learning gaps in the classrooms. Speaking from a high school perspective, the past two years have seen regents exams canceled, and we had the hybrid learning model for the middle school, high school students. Our elementary school did reopen with kids in school five days a week, and I give tremendous credit to our Board of Education and our administration for making that difficult decision. But there were still major learning obstacles for both students and teachers. We've essentially had two years where our students have not been held accountable academically, and again, to no fault of the district and the teachers, and as a result, the students and teachers find themselves in a position unlike any that we have ever seen. At the elementary level, grade level reading and writing has dropped drastically nationwide. How this is going to impact all of those students over the long term by the time they reach high school, nobody really knows. But if we're going to bridge these gaps, then we have to do things differently than we've done in the past, and that gap is different for every student. Consider how devastating all this has been for students with special needs, like my son Quinn, who was in preschool at the time the schools shut down. My wife and I saw firsthand how much more of an impact this closing had on his development than it did on his older siblings. We can't pretend that our kids are right where they would have been had none of this ever happened. We need to listen very carefully to our teachers as the experts in the field and make sure that they have whatever resources they need to bridge these gaps, because we're talking about our children's education, and personally, I can't put a price on that. Thank.
Shamar?
Wow. Nope. Do I need to move it down? There we go. Wow, what an incredible time it is to be an Avon brave for the community, to look out and see so many people come out in support of our district's future is inspiring. You know, it wasn't that long ago I sat there as a student, looking ahead to my future, wondering where I'd wind up. This is a full circle moment. It is the foundation that I received within these walls that have led me to feel so empowered to advocate and lead the next generation. I look back to when I was a student here, it was six years ago, to be exact, that I sat in this very room watching our senior slideshow, watching all the clips roll on the screen of all the memories my classmates and I created. Our friendships were built on the core values this district taught us, once a brave, always a brave. Today, I'm here to allow the community to get to know me a little better. Many of the faculty and staff within the district have great memories of my time here as a student, my contagious laugh that can be heard down the halls, my extreme motivation to always work harder to my goals and never give up. No matter where life takes me, I will never give up. After graduating from Avon, I went on to Monroe Community College and obtained my associate's degree in business administration. When the world shut down due to the, due to COVID, I realized how fulfilling it would be to help others achieve their dream of becoming homeowners. I began the process to become a Realtor. While I was working hard to achieve that goal, I was also challenged by many of the same lows we felt during the pandemic. I had not prioritized my health the way I should have, which led me to gain a lot of weight. My father's sudden passing was a wake-up call to reprioritize my own health. I was able to lose over 200 pounds due to the hard work and dedication, all while launching my real estate business. This is what hard work, dedication, perseverance, bravery, and never giving up gives you. I am now working full-time as a Realtor, helping local families navigate this tough real estate market. It is not, it has not been an easy process, but with the help of the educational foundation this district was able to provide me, I have been able to learn so many things at such a young age. Avon has taught me so much more than educational basics. Avon has taught me how to help people, how to be a responsible adult, how to succeed in life, and most importantly, how to step up to challenging tasks. I'm here today to support my wonderful community that has done nothing but support me my entire life. My fellow community members have expressed their concerns and the need for change. What better way for me to give back than to seek a spot for the Avon School Board? I look forward to listening to everyone's concerns and hope to leave a profound impact on the students and community of Avon. Thank you.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Steve Como. I grew up an hour south of Boston, Fall River, Mass, a large, highly diverse but economically depressed city. In 1997, I graduated at the top of my high school class and went on to Boston University, where I completed my bachelor's in biomedical engineering and my PhD in bioinformatics. After my graduate studies, I entered the biotech and pharma industry, where I spent the last 16 years of my career innovating new technologies and discovering novel medicines to help save patients' lives. My most recent project was deemed the highest priority asset in research and development in my company of 50,000 people, an anti-cancer molecule that I led the engineering for, in addition to leading this highly collaborative, cross-functional team in a high-pressure environment, culminating in a successful handoff to our development team. My VP has stated that I'm the most creative scientist he has come across in his 20-year career, and he has stated that my project leadership skills are exemplary. You may have noted that unlike other candidates here, I do not have a background in education. However, what I do have are a very particular set of skills, skills I have acquired over a very long career. I am one of 80 leaders my company has chosen to attend a West Point training for leadership, which is being given by various career Army generals next week. The pre-work for this program has really resonated with me and is aligned with several of my core beliefs. They asked us to think about developing a leadership philosophy, and I eventually found that mine is reactive. Of course, you may think it's better to be proactive, but the fact that you listened to me and quickly formed an opinion on that word was in itself a reaction. I'll have to put in the effort to listen to the problems of the students, teachers, administration, and community to help address their needs. But reactive is far more than the word itself. It's also an acronym comprised of my deeper core values. I'm respectful. I will take all matters seriously, whether or not they fit my own beliefs. I am eager. I will work hard to achieve positive outcomes. I'm agile. I'm always looking for process improvements, and some of my favorite words are, but what if, as I try to game out various scenarios. Communication. Every team needs to be able to share and digest information to function properly. Trustworthy. I work incredibly hard at building trust with those around me. Integrity. I value, I value owning and learning from mistakes and working as a team to resolve them without finger pointing. Vision. I try to take a look at the big picture, and last but not, last but not least, equality. Irrespective of societal status, race, sexual orientation, I firmly believe that everyone deserves the same opportunity. It is one of the principles our country was founded on. I moved to Avon in 2016 with my wife Ashley, who was born here, and my two children, Barrett and Cameron, both of whom are in middle school. However, it's not just for my kids that I'm running, it's for yours as well. Over the past two years, I have coached lacrosse and eventually sat on the Avon Lacrosse Club Board, and this community involvement has been a transformational experience. Philosophically, I made an effort to teach, to tell each and every kid at least three good things they did for every constructive criticism I had to give. They listened, they grew, they had fun, and I like to think that I played at least a small role in their experience. And that's why I'm here. I have a strong passion for watching the kids grow and will work, oh, sorry.
Thank you very much to Dr. Pekati, to Sharon, Miranda, Nicole, the PTA, and everybody who's turned out. I, I don't know who put me next to the Army-trained bioscientists, but thanks for that. So, and I felt a little misled. I talked to Tim earlier this week, and he said this was a meet and greet, so I thought we were going to just be standing around drinking coffee. I didn't know we were going to be onstage under the lights, so new experience for me. Anyways, my family's in attendance, my wife Shayna, my son Jax, my son Finn, my son Levi, and my daughter Isla. We're somewhat new to Avon. We built a home here in 2020. Avon's never felt more like home to us, really, and we're just really proud to be part of this community. We're a family of faith, conservative values. I feel like I need to just introduce myself a little bit to you, because I don't know all of you, but our children's education and their social development is constantly on the forefront of our minds, whether it's at the dinner table, driving in the car, you know, just me and my wife sitting by the fireplace. We, we're passionate about it, and we feel very strongly about it, and it's something that I'm, I'd love to be a part of and part of this process. I spent 19 years in law enforcement. I've seen firsthand what bad policy, poor decision-making, and weak leadership has led to, and quite frankly, I just don't want to see that happen ever here in Avon, as long as we live here. We can't let it happen. Teamwork is what we do in law enforcement. I spent about eight and a half years overseeing our school resource officer program, a, a part of the police department I was very, very, very proud of, the work that not only me, but my colleagues did. And it was a constant battle of, of, you know, protecting the, the learning environment of children, but also, you know, you know, keeping their, their safety at the forefront, and it was awesome. So I'm, I'm no stranger to the education world. I don't boast the academic credentials that some of the people on stage do, but I can tell you that I was in the trenches trying to figure out, you know, good solutions to complex problems on a daily basis. You know, if elected, I pledge to put families first, to create accountability and transparency for our school leaders, to ensure that our beloved teachers know their value. Good work's hard to find these days, I think anybody in business will tell you that, and I want our teachers to also see that, not only that we value them, but they see it in their paychecks as well. You know, I, I just, I want to make sure that every student that walks through these doors feels safe and feels protected, and I'd be honored to get your vote on May 16th. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I gotta make sure. I've, I've been on the board here since 2002, which I really, really like. But anyways, my wife has been here, she worked here in the cafeteria for 25 years, so kind of close to home here. I worked at the DEC here in East Avon for about 38 years, and of course, I retired almost 14 years ago, so I've had plenty of time to do some of this stuff that's asked of me, and I bring a lot to the table as far as going to, well, I'm on the BOSI's board as well. I get to see not only Avon's stuff, but I see all the other districts in, in the BOSI's area. They're, they're very similar to what we're doing here, just hoping for the best, and again, I hope we do have good luck with that, too. It all depends on what the governor does for us, so watch that. I've got two kids. One is a peace officer in Monroe County Community College, and my daughter was a physical therapist, and she decided she wanted to be a nurse, so she's now a nurse, an R and rather, and then she teaches over, it's a Brockport College as well, nursing. So I'm really proud of the both of my sons and daughter. They both graduated from here. So I came in here in 1968, so pretty much all my life here. Just following through with, with some of these other candidates that said, I treasure the thoughts of Avon. Actually, what I think is, this school in particular is the hub of Avon. Everything happens because we're here, and I, and I really would like to keep that continuing because it's, it's, it's a really good thought for me. I had taught, I was also on the Genesee Valley School Board Association for a number of years. One of my friends, we hired to be a director, Jim Thompson, was really good to work with. He's, he was a principal at an elementary school in Leroy, so I've got to learn a lot about elementary school because that's what he did. But one of those things he told me, he said, just, you get a new teacher in, and just let him drive the bus, see where the kids come from, and then you'll understand what, what the story is. It's in our best interest, though, that, I'm another fan of, oops.
As an extra visual crew, our superintendent's going to stand up because we believe that you're having a hard time seeing the yellow. So you will see the yellow, and he will also stand up. Our first question is book banning. And Rodney, you're up first. The question is, what are your views concerning censorship, and what role do you feel the board should have in deciding what books and materials are available for our students? You may begin.
I think, I think I heard the question. I did not hear most of it. I don't know why, maybe it's my hearing. I think it's about censorship on books and so on. I believe that we have very competent library media specialists, and their job is to select appropriate books for appropriate age groups for their libraries, and, and we, we should be diverse in our, in our libraries and what we have, not just one-sided or whatever. And in addition to that, New York State law, or educational, educational law states that you, you must provide material representative of many religious, ethnic, and cultural groups that have contributions to the American heritage. So I believe that our library media specialists are the experts, and they will select the right books that we need, so.
Tim?
First of all, I think it's important to establish that banning books refers to making books illegal for sale and distribution, and this is a form of censorship. I am 100% against censorship of any kind, because it's a violation of the First Amendment. I am against banning any books of any kind at any time. That being said, we currently have books in our high school library that contain obscene and pornographic material, and I have one of those books with me tonight. It is a violation of both state and federal law for an individual to disseminate or distribute obscene or pornographic material to minor children. If I, as a private citizen and public school teacher, were to hand this book to a minor child, I would lose my job, my license, and I would be facing seven to 10 years in prison, and rightfully so. And just to be clear, the book that I'm referring to, that I have with me, has absolutely nothing to do with LGBTQ. Both the state and federal laws clearly define what constitutes obscene and pornographic material, but obscenity exemption statutes make it legal for schools to make books like this one available to our minor children simply by saying that they're intended for educational purposes. Just because someone found a way to make it legal doesn't make it right. We, as the parents and as the Avon community, need to take a stand and do our moral and ethical duty by removing every single piece of obscene and pornographic material from our schools. Let us be the community that others look to for leadership, and let us show the.
Shamar?
I think it's important that we trust the professionals that are in the classrooms to recommend books for growth and learning for the students. Banning books is the equivalent of restricting access to education. If our main mission is to promote lifetime learning, how is restricting information and freedom of thought doing that?
Stephen?
While I certainly agree that there should be age-appropriate books available to children, I adamantly disagree with the practice of banning books in school. The American Library Association noted that in 2022, over 1,200 demands for censor, to censor library books and resources nearly doubled from the 729 challenges in 2021. These demands called for over 2,500 unique titles. The vast majority were written about members of the LGBTQIA community and people of color with an aim to silence these groups. I do not believe we should be taking the choice of books out of the hands of parents and students, and this is precisely what book banning will do. If a parent deems a book to be inappropriate, it is their responsibility to explain to their children why they feel it so. It is absolutely a choice not to read a given book. My bigger question is, why is this happening? And while I vow to take an apolitical stance on the board and aim to serve the best interests of all students, we need to be aware of how national politics can impact local discussions, and we have seen increased political fervor at school broad, school boards nationally. Last August, a political operative in the, it said in the New York Times that they needed to pivot away from anti-critical race theory campaigning and to attacking LGBTQ-inclusive curriculums. He told the paper, "The reservoir of sentiment on the sexuality issue is deeper and more explosive than the sentiment on race issues. The sentiment, combined with the gross misinformation about these communities, has stirred the pot nationally. I see the slippery slope that book banning can lead to, such as a Florida school principal being fired for showing the Statue of David."
Jared?
You know, just from my experience in law enforcement, I would just tell you that, you know, we see, it's almost an epidemic in terms of children and sharing indecent material and explicit material, and, you know, kids are facing jail time today because of a picture that goes around school or something on their phone that they weren't supposed to have that they shared. You know, as law enforcement, I take it pretty seriously. I, I know the book Tim is referring to. I'm not for censorship. I don't think we should be overly legalistic and, 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 you know, I don't like when people get, you know, we, it's this big thing to ban things and censor people. That's not what I'm about. I think that we have to be pragmatic in our thinking. I think we need to take a close look at what our children are being exposed to, particularly parents that just don't really know what is in the library. I think some people sitting in this very room would be pretty shocked to know what some of these, and I don't think, you know, it's always about education, I guess, is, is my, my view on that. So I just would like a pragmatic approach to being responsible to what we're putting in our children's eyes and their hands and in their minds.
Bob?
I really don't believe in banning books. It hasn't worked in the past. I mean, with burning books even, it's just, it's, it's history that's, it's gone, and you ban a book, you can't read back to what really did happen, and the future as well. Banning books is, and I'm afraid that, just looking at the telephones, or the cellphones these people have, I think you've had more fear of that than we have in the library. It's, I don't know if you've seen some of that stuff, but it is ridiculous. My colleague here just double up on what he said, it's terrible.
Next question, we'll start with you, Tim. It's social and emotional mental health. Describe what being an inclusive school environment means to you, and explain how, as a board member, you will support the cultivation of such an environment.
I'll explain it from the perspective of being a teacher who does this on a daily basis. If I want to be a great teacher, there are a few things that are essential and that I have to do every day. I have to make sure that every student feels safe and protected when they're in my room. I have to do everything I can to help my students understand the content that I'm teaching, whether it's regent chemistry, living environment, AP chemistry, and I have to connect with each of my students on at least one level that has absolutely nothing to do with my content area. It could be dance, the play, sports, music, it doesn't matter, and I don't have to be an expert on the subject. I just have to be genuinely interested. And that's how the students end up feeling at home in my room, like it's not my room, it's their room. If teachers can do that every day, and I can help as a board member to foster that in teachers on a daily basis, to make sure that when kids are being picked on, any kids for any reason, that our teachers shut it down swiftly and firmly, and that we have consequences for any kids being picked on for any reason at all, that we stick to those consequences, and that we make sure that every student who walks through our doors feels safe, protected, cared for, before we even. protected, cared for, before we even think about the content specific things that we have to do as teachers on a daily basis.
Thank you, Shamar.
I think mental health in today's day and age is something that a lot of people don't talk about and it should be talked about a lot more. And I don't think the district has enough support available for students and staff regarding mental health. Mental health is something that needs to be prioritized. It impacts the way students learn and the way the staff can teach and support our children. Without mental health support services, we are not fostering a lifelong, lifelong learning environment for our district. And it's causing children and students not to come forward with their concerns. And they don't know where to go or who to go to, or they maybe don't have somebody that they can trust in a situation like that. And we can see it across the country, but if we can manage to address mental health and give people the support and services that they need, long term, it's going to help people grow as individuals and progress in life and just become better individuals.
Steve.
I'm intolerant of bullying. I was bullied as a kid and happy to see that my kids are not being bullied, at least to my knowledge, or in the same way that I was. Last week nationally, there was a Montana state rep who had a trans daughter and suggested she'd rather risk her child's suicide than let her transition. I was floored when I heard the speech. For me, having an inclusive school environment is providing children with emotional and mental health counseling, with an emotional and mental health counseling system where they can express their own concerns, particularly when there's deaf ears at home. We need a strong student counseling staff that will always have open doors for students who feel like there's no one else to talk to.
Jerry.
I think I mentioned in the opening that student and the safety and security is paramount to me. I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I think my experience in law enforcement is really, you know, what drives a lot of my thinking. And I think that's good. I think we need a diverse school board up here with, you know, different viewpoints. I, I'm on our hostage negotiation team and I have peer support training. So crisis management and dealing with mental health, emotional health is something we do, not just for the community, but for law enforcement officers. So it's near and dear to my heart in terms of making sure that we have a safe and secure and inclusive environment for our students, particularly those that are dealing with emotional and mental health issues. You know, I've spent, you know, time with our SROs and coming up with complex ways to deal with, you know, simple ways to deal with some complex situations. And quite honestly, the buy-in from the school district is really important to that and central to that. So, yeah.
I believe that we should make available to help the student come along in their way of going through the school because this notion that there's nobody to talk to, well, we're adding more as we speak here. And it's just something we just have to continue to do because it just seems to multiply more and more. For whatever reason, somebody was sick or passed away or whatever. It's just, this is something you really need to keep track of because it's, it's not, it's nothing new. It's been here and it just seems to be getting worse. I recommend people who have these issues that I talk to seek further help, whether it be in the school or in private practice. But, you know, it's not my problem, it's the student's problem and I'm looking out for the student. So whatever we need to do to get that direction followed, I am all for that.
Rodney.
Mental health is the number one issue facing school districts, not just in New York or in Avon, but across the country. Sitting on the NISBA School Board, we have experts coming in and talking to us, telling us how devastating it is throughout the country and what districts need to do to add to their staff and so on to try to mitigate this. That's why in our budget, we've added additional social worker this year. We put it, we're adding a second SRO down at elementary school for the safety so that when parents drop their kids off at school, they can feel just as safe as if they were staying at home. So mental health is a very big issue facing everyone throughout the country.
The next question, we'll start with you, Shamar, and it has to do with curriculum. What do you think is the greatest challenge in our school district regarding special education?
There are many concerns from our parents of students with special needs. I would be eager to see how we could better address their needs. We want to make sure as leadership, we are being inclusive of everyone and take into consideration what we may need to do to ensure everyone has a quality education. As a board member, it would be our responsibility to consult with the professionals in the district, the parents, and come up with plans that make sure we're being inclusive of everybody.
Steven.
I think that we have to ensure that we have enough staff and/or space to meet the students' needs. It's my understanding that as part of the capital improvement project, there were assets taken away from special need resources. I haven't fully followed through on this, but this is what I heard from certain parents whose children have special needs. I do have to say that from the staff that I'm aware of, though, we do have an extraordinary staff who is committed to giving the children the attention that they need. And I know of several positive outcomes through this. But we can always do better, right? And we are, we need to be committed to make sure that every child gets the attention that they need.
Jerry.
I'm so interested in becoming part of this process is because I think I have a lot to learn. I don't have a child with special needs, but I can tell you that I would love to learn what that looks like and where money is spent and how it's efficiently spent. You know, every single student that walks through these doors, you know, should be considered special by our school staff, our administrators, the school board. But when we have a child with special needs, I just want to make sure that they're getting the attention they need, the resources that they need. And I have a lot to learn in that regard, but, you know, that's, that's something that I'd be, I'd be very interested in becoming a part of that process and learning more about.
I've talked to parents who have their son or daughter with special needs, one or two or three. And I talk to them about arranging for help. It's there. My, my expectation was that the parents would follow through and get the help that's available. It's, I really do hope that they do follow with that. Because it comes on, it comes to school and it just pushes that item back where you can't learn because he just, oh, I'm sorry, it's not very well. I just think that I'm all for pushing the kids that need the help into the different spots they could go. We have people going to BOCs for many, many issues and they're graduating.
Rodney.
Yes, I'm extremely proud of our special education in Avon. Several years ago, we used to ship out most of our special ed kids to different areas, BOCs and so on like that. And we took a concerted effort and said, you know what, they can get a better education right here in Avon. And we brought the majority of those kids that could come back. We brought them back in, we brought in one-on-one aides or whatever we needed. So they became part of the Avon family. So again, I am very proud of our special ed department and what they're doing.
This one's near and dear to my heart. My son Quinn is a special needs student here at Avon. My wife, Toni, and I went through years, the years before he even got to school, where we were working with KidStart, an amazing program that was just to get him ready to attend school. So we've been through the work it takes at home as the parents of the special needs kids who are working outside of that classroom to provide the extra support that the students need, that a special needs student needs, just to be able to try to, again, going back to bridging gaps, to get our son ready for kindergarten, took years of hard work. And thank God he loves school, but we understand full well what it takes to be parents of a special needs student. My wife teaches in the elementary school with special needs students. She's a TA down there. This is her job on a daily basis. The things that I know district wide that we could do better, we need to have smaller class sizes, especially at the elementary school, where we set a solid ratio where it's not maybe more than 14 students to one classroom teacher before we even start talking about the special ed teachers and staff, we need to provide a support for that. There's a lot of things that we could do to improve what I agree with Rodney is a fantastic special ed department here at Avon.
Steve, this question is for you first. It's teacher advocacy. The country is facing a teacher shortage. Why do you think that is? And how can our Board of Education ensure that Avon is in a position to attract and retain talented teachers?
It's a bit baffling to me that we have one of the highest school tax rates in the county, yet spend towards the bottom on both teacher salaries as well as cost per student. Teacher retention promotes educational continuity. I will aim to challenge the budget and see how we can improve both of those numbers. As of now, the budget is a giant black box to me and as somebody with an engineering background, I hate black boxes. I have a desire to know the ins and outs of the systems and I think we need to scrutinize the spending.
Thank you, Jerry.
I mentioned earlier, you know, anybody that owns a business or is in education, law enforcement, any of the trades, it's hard to keep good people. And it just seems like today, a lot of people don't want to work, which is just kind of baffling to me. But I know for a fact and firsthand, we have an incredible group of teachers here in the Avon School District. I know many of them personally. And I got to echo what Steve said because I know what I pay in taxes. Sharon Well knows what I pay in taxes. And it's interesting to me that we are at the bottom. It doesn't seem quite right. It seems like there's an adjustment needed there, particularly because we are facing these shortages. We're facing them in law enforcement, we're facing them all over. And I think our teachers here in Avon deserve not only to be told how good they are and what a great job they do, but also to have that reflected in their paychecks.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, I'm all for the advocacy. That's kind of what I like to do. In particular, we teach your mentoring, I love that. We did that at BOCs through the Tennessee Valley School Board Association. And again, you got to support the teachers and if in fact, the training that we're offering at that time, a teacher may or may not could use it. But, you know, it's just, it's a chance for us to do, well, us, I mean, the BOCs and the school here can do, I'm always, I'm always walking around, looking at the pictures in the walls. I stuck my head in a classroom and love to talk. I got in trouble though, so.
Thank you, Rodney.
I mentioned earlier about mental health being number one. Well, teacher shortages is number two in the country. They're just not going to college, they're not, not taking the courses or wanting to become teachers anymore. In my discussions with our state and federal officials, we keep telling them, you got to do something incentive, whether it's, it's, you know, pay their college tuition if they teach for four years afterwards, but we need to give some kind of incentive to kids coming out of high school, going to college to go into the teacher's profession.
Tim.
I agree with Rodney on that point for sure, but we also need to take care of the teachers who aren't going anywhere. Some who are, have been in the district long enough that they're, it's not feasible for them to go to another district because they're basically priced out. Teachers who we want to keep here for the long term, we don't want them tempted away to go to other districts. We lose so many to Monroe County as it is. If we're at the bottom of Livingston County, now they don't have to drive us far. That's, that's not a good thing. Great teachers didn't get into this profession because they wanted summers off. A lot of us have summer jobs and we didn't do it to become rich, hence the summer jobs. But if we're not going to pay the teachers enough to stay here, we're going to lose that consistency with our kids. KidStart, I mentioned, amazing program, but so much turnover because they don't pay the staff there. We're a public school, we've got plenty of tax money. We generate enough revenue to make sure our teachers never have to look anywhere else so that we can have consistent education here for our kids. We have fantastic teachers. I have seven kids, they never complain about their teachers. And I want to keep it that way. I'd like to see that consistency, not have us have the turnover that some of the districts who aren't that far away from us are already experiencing.
Shamar.
Just like everybody else said, we really do truly have some of the best teachers in New York State, you know? I see a lot of you out there today that taught me when I was in school. I'm glad that you guys are all here tonight. Students come to the teachers with more needs than ever and the teachers are working harder to meet these needs and are still some of the lowest paid in the area. It is very important that we think long and hard about areas where we need to improve. And obviously, teacher pay is something that I do agree, we need to do our best to try and bridge that gap so we can make sure we're keeping the teachers that are providing this level of support to the students in our district.
Thank you, Steve.
I kicked it off.
Next question, student advocacy. The following questions were generated by a government class. What are your thoughts on phone electronics policies in school? Instead of a ban on USH, should students be taught to use their phones responsibly and respectfully? When it comes to teacher enforcement, what is more important, consistency or discretion?
Well, I'd love to just give this question to my wife because she is pretty much anti-electronics. If it were up to her, we'd all be reading by candlelight every night and discussing our hopes and dreams. I would just say that I know those phones and electronic devices in kids' hands, I've just seen the dangers of it. I will be the first to admit that each one of my children has a phone. They use it regularly and we just recently began implementing some house rules that we're just too distracted by them. And more than being distracted by them, they're just, they just can be very dangerous. They can divide our time, they can divide our relationships, they can cause us to make bad choices. And I think in the school setting, I think in moderation, phones and electronic devices, yes, the teacher's discretion, that's great. You know, I, you know, I think in the Greece School District that I'm familiar with, they banned phones. I think there's probably middle ground there. I'd like to see our kids be given some latitude and be empowered to make good decisions. And I think part of that just starts at home with good boundaries and good rules as it relates to the electronic devices in general. So, yeah.
Cell phones are an issue in the classroom. All I think what they should do is just turn them off. Keep the phones, turn them off and turn them back on when they leave the room. Again, walking down the hall, you hear some noise, but talking with each other. And it's very distracting for anybody in the hallways or just to, let alone teach a classroom with somebody talking or playing games or whatever. More important things to do than talk on the phone, I think. Electronic devices, I was pushing for all these computers to come out before COVID. Again, the cell phones, they've always been been an issue, but we got to, when we got the computers, that helped, that helped with the teeny, I'm sorry.
You still have 30 seconds.
Oh, okay. Yeah. You know, my son was quite frequently using with some other kids. He got onto a couple of different sites that I, they forgot dad knew how to do stuff, you know? They find those places and they go on, and they just continue.
Rodney.
Yes, I, I feel that electronic devices such as phones and so on should be kept in the locker. Kids can go out in between classes and so on if they have to use them, but not in the classroom. However, if a teacher should have a lesson plan that incorporates the use of a cellphone or how to use it, I would be okay with that because it's the teacher's discretion. I think they would know best.
Tim?
I don't know if I'm supposed to do this because we're running against each other, but I agree with Rodney. I, I think phones in the lockers is, is a great idea. See, I'm on the other side of this also, as a parent and as a teacher. And I'm telling you that when, if, if we just go with at the teacher's discretion, it's really hard to get that toothpaste back in the tube. And once kids start using their phones in classrooms, they don't stop. There are so many apps these kids want to get on and check. It's not just texting. For me, I, it's just text, Facebook, that's it. I don't know anything else. I think Snapchat's on my phone, but I don't know how to use it. My kids have 20, 30, 50 apps, and at any time, they're getting notifications. My students in school, at the teacher's discretion, I don't let the kids have their cellphones out because every single kid has a Chromebook or access to a Chromebook. They don't need their cellphones. How many times this year I couldn't tell you where I've had a kid that I've already asked to put his phone away three times. Hey, can you put your phone? That's it, third time. I'm going to take it from you. And I hear, it's my mom, or it's my dad. There's no easy solution to this, but I agree with Rodney. Put the phones in the lockers. Leave them there. If they have to go check something, can I go check? I think my mom was supposed to text me. That's fine. But schools, I'm sorry, phones in the classrooms doesn't work.
Samara.
So I'm not really too sure what the current policy at Avon is, but when I was in school, we had three zones. We had a green zone, a yellow zone, and a red zone. Red zone, no phones. Green zone, you could use your phones. And I believe the yellow zone was, you could use it with the teacher instruction. So, I mean, it's 2023, guys. Phones are not going away. Now, I would say, obviously, students need to learn to, to not get distracted by their phones. I'm young, so I understand that, you know, we're getting notifications on Snapchat and TikTok and Facebook and Instagram and everything, right? Like, it's, it's happening. When I was in school, I was only on my phone when the time was permitted. I don't think putting a ban on phones is going to go over well with anybody. I don't think parents will be happy that they might not be able to communicate with their kids. I mean, there was plenty of times where I would reach out to my mom or dad and just check in with them. So I think we do need to have some type of policy that people can, can get used to and make sure everybody is, you know, in a win-win situation.
Thank you. And now, Steve.
So I actually saw some of this firsthand last year. I was invited to guest teach two high school freshman science classes and tell them about some of the research I was doing on developing anti-COVID antibodies and structural biology and protein engineering and all this sort of stuff to tackle real world problems in real time. I was quite dismayed by the overall level of disinterest by the students, as many of them were actually on their phones. And that was quite disturbing to me. It spoke to me that the interest and/or morale with the students was low. One of the classes was more engaged than the other, but the electronic policy at the time seemed to contribute to negative student outcomes and promoted being distracted. I find it difficult for students to grow in that environment. Of course, I won't deal with absolutes. I, I think there should be situations where discretion should be permitted, but I'm very much in the put them away camp. I, I find it really difficult to use the phone responsibly or respectfully during instruction.
Thank you. Bob, this is your question first. It has to do with budget. What are your thoughts on the capital improvement project? And how do you see it benefiting students?
We're working through this budget now. Hopefully, it'll pass when the election comes up here. But we set, well, in particular, our building project, I'm not sure if people know about this, the, we get so much aid on what we're building. And what we do is, we have an account that we put money into and only can draw from the building, to the building project. It can't be used for anything else. It has to get voter approval to be taken out. We also have another one for equipment, same thing. You have to fill it up and then, and then you get voter approval to take it out. So there's really nothing you can do with, too much with that money, except just follow through with the next project. That's, I hate to cut it short, I'm going to be, okay.
Rodney.
Process.
What are your thoughts on capital improvement projects? And how do you see if, how do you see it benefiting students?
This, the particular capital project that, that we're currently getting ready to break ground on or start, what do I think of it? I, I think many capital projects are, some are very, I want to, I want to say, pretty full and beautiful and does things like this auditorium was a capital project. And the other things that we did behind the scene was like remove asbestos and so on. This capital project doesn't really give us a really aesthetic type of thing, but it is doing things that, that are necessary to be done in order to go to the next step or the next project. So we're not redoing something that we've done before in the past and redoing it. The process, I believe, is very good in the fact that we bring in community members, staff, we bring in architects and so on. We bring them all to the table, and they go over a five-year plan, and, and they decide what needs to be done and how quickly it needs to be done. Can we let it go to the next one or not to the next one? So this project here required what we, what, what we're doing this year in order to compete into the, be ready for the next project.
Thank you, Tim.
I, I'm very close to two capital projects, one that impacts me as a teacher, one that impacts me as a parent. I, I'm not a fan of the process, and I can say exactly why. In terms of budgeting, I think too often we start from the wrong end, and we start trying to figure out what it is we can cut. I think the best place to start, especially in a school, is what can we not cut? There's three things that I think are essential in order to have a school. I think it's a non-negotiable. It would be students, teachers, and a building. If you don't have those, you don't have a school. So those are the three things you don't divert money away from. Those are the three things you try to put as much of your money toward. And when it comes to the building, I think you prioritize even within the building. What part of the building impacts the students to the greatest degree the most often? Where are the students the most on a daily basis? The classrooms. Everything in those classrooms should be top priority. Not just the academic things in those classrooms, but the mechanical workings in the classrooms, the heat, the AC, whatever it takes to make those functional. After that, you've got athletic and arts facilities. Those should be top two priorities in the building. The top three priorities being students, teachers in school, you prioritize everything from there. And the further away you move from those essentials, that's where you look to start to cut or divert money away from, not from students, teachers, and the building.
Thank you. Samara.
So right before this event started, I was actually talking with Mr. George about this capital improvement project that we're, we're in today. And I said, it looks great. I mean, I love it. The, the green chairs and the walls, just everything about it makes it feel like a true auditorium. However, it's been brought to my attention by many, many students within the district that there are many building maintenance issues that have been neglected. It's my opinion that we need to fix things like leaking roofs and other unsafe features of our school grounds. Student-focused changes need to be a priority within our capital improvement projects.
Thank you, Steve.
Similar to Shay, I, I'd have to answer this in the context of what other priorities need to be addressed. When we have to change logos on the fields, courts, signage, et cetera, due to the mascot change, will the taxpayers be on the hook for this? Or will we get additional state aid? Are there ongoing maintenance issues in the buildings that are not being addressed, such as leaky roofs and, you know, HVAC machines, et cetera? What gains will we get from the improved aesthetics in student gathering spaces? Are there capital improvements that can be made to give better educational value to the students, investment in science labs or wood shops, et cetera, that can better ready them for the future?
Thank you, Jared.
I mean, I'd like to think of myself as mostly a fiscal conservative. I know capital campaign and projects are important, certainly this auditorium, ball fields, things that we get a lot of bang for our buck in in terms of the student and the visitor, you know, value in. You know, I look at, you know, everybody knows money is used to buy things, but I, you know, money is an investment tool, and I think investing it back into our students and our teachers is where we need to start first. I gotta, I just echo what Tim said is that's the priority. You know, getting kids involved in certain vocations and trades and things that are on the rise in, in these communities. You know, I, I was overseeing our explorer program, and that's getting kids interested in a career in law enforcement at an earlier age and exposing them to that. And, and quite honestly, some of the budget things I'd like to become involved in if elected to the board is in the weeds there in trying to get money allocated towards developing kids in trades and different things they're interested in. I just think it's so important with where this world is headed. So of course, the capital projects are important, but I'd like to really see what this budget looks like inside and out.
Thank you. The last question, and Rodney, you'll start, has to do with mascot changes. How will you guide us smoothly through New York State laws and mandates such as logo, mascot changes?
Okay, being on the school board, obviously, we had heard from SED back in November, and we've been following what they were thinking of doing, what they were trying to do to us. And we were being proactive, we were proactive. We sent letters to, the SED had set up a committee. We proactive by sending letters to try and find out what, what is involved. Does that mean just the logo? Do we have to get rid of the name? So on. We, we've gone to the New York State School Board's attorney that, that I know. We've contacted him to find out what's going on. We discussed things with other school districts and so on. Just last week or two weeks ago, we found out that SED has voted 17-0 or something to eliminate everything. No one's going to be able to keep everything. Still waiting for some guidance on that, but the school district is being proactive. We, we've named two co-facilitators to form a committee of, of both students, staff, and community members that will take a look at what we have to do and what, and give the board suggestions on if we do have to change one or both, what would we do?
Tim?
Well, I'm very glad that Rodney went first on that one, because he obviously knows the ins and outs of the mascot issue, and it's great. I think I, I have nothing but admiration for how these guys have put in the time it takes to deal with an issue like this that goes up to the state level. We're talking about our local Native American representation and communication back and forth. So my hat's off to the board and our administration for all the work they've done to get us to where we are. I think it was probably a moot point from the start, because like Rodney said, 17, nothing, they're going to get rid of it. So instead of focusing on, you know, whether or not that should be happening, it is. Now, how do we mitigate the cost of that happening? I know Steve mentioned that, you know, are we going to get hit as taxpayers for that one? Or do we have money set aside? Is the state going to help us pay for that? What's the easiest way to mitigate that from the standpoint of keeping it as close to what we have now? Can we go from the brave, a Native American reference, to Avon brave, where the context is bravery, to keep the Braves way that we have in the elementary school the kids love? So I'd like to keep it as close as we can to what the kids know and what the kids have gotten used to. And really, that I think has, has been a fantastic representation of what we stand for as a community. So hopefully, we can stick as close as possible to that.
Am I good to go? Oh, yeah, I'm good to go. Okay. So I'm gonna agree and say that I do believe I would like to see us be able to keep it as close as we can. However, it's not up to us. And New York State, I suppose, has brought down legislation and whatnot saying that it needs to go completely. So we really don't have a choice, and we would be required to do it to keep getting state funding, right? So what we're going to need to do is create a plan and a solution to correct what we have, right? We have our mascot and our, our logo and everything, all over everything. I did notice that some stuff has started to change, like signs and stuff at the road, which is great. But it, I mean, it has to change. If the state has passed down guidance saying that, we have to do it.
Steve.
We have to put our faith in the current board and administration, that they explored all opportunities to keep the name, but the state wouldn't budge. Unfortunately, sometimes you're just dealt a bad hand and you have to suck it up. But since state aid relies on us changing, we're going to have to. Since moving here in 2016, I've learned that being a brave isn't just about a logo and a mascot. It's a philosophy. You can feel the community pride when you say it, and it's quite reasonable to be upset that it's changing. We also have to remember that they may take the name, but they won't take that community pride. We'll have to rally around some other name, and we'll, I'm sure we'll still cheer on our athletes, scholars, and community with the same passion. Change sometimes sucks, and it will be awkward and painful while we transition and learn to love the new mascot and name. But I think our community spirit will help heal that pain in short order. Since this is mandated by the state, I'm hoping that we would be able to ask for additional state funds to implement some of the infrastructure associated with the change. It seems like it's an undue tax burden to our community. And personally, in terms of new mascots, I enjoy walks on the Iriatica Trail, and there's an osprey nest atop a cellphone tower in the parking lot. So I like the Avon osprey.
Jared.
You know, in law enforcement, I'm no stranger to, you know, an edict or a directive from the state. I'd love to know a little bit more about what that looks like and, and really kind of get a better understanding of, of how that's going to impact us. I agree with the gentleman before me that I'd like to see that, the impact on the school district and, you know, mitigate it to the best we can. I, just real quick, I'd like to tell a story. So I have a friend, I've been friends with him since kindergarten. He's a Native American. He's from the Navajo tribe. And, you know, we, we have talked about this a lot, actually. Talked to his family, his other friends that are Native Americans. And, you know, I just flat out asked him, what, what's your thoughts on this? What do, what do you think about this? And, you know, it's always a resounding, you know, you're making a bigger deal about this than we are. And that doesn't speak for all the Native American or Indigenous people for sure, for sure. But that's his stance. You know, he's very proud. You know, a lot of these, his friends and family would rally behind a mascot for a sports team or things like that. And so that's just my personal experience with it. You know, if the state makes a ruling and we have to abide by it, them's the rules. But I'd like to see it mitigated as best we can and really stay true to, to the, the logo and the name that we've kind of embraced and become accustomed to here in Avon, so.
Thank you, Tom.
Well, the consequences would be to pull the board members off and lose our, some of our aid, or if not all of it. So that's the other side of the story that we have to deal with. I don't, I personally like the Braves. I've been a Brave since 1968 and still like to. But what Albany has to say about it, and we have to listen to what they follow through. I'm, I'm glad that we have our own committee looking for information and what we can do. We'll be hearing about that later on. But we're supposed to have a plan in place, I think, by the end of the school year.
Well, that concludes our question and answers portion of the event. And now, we would like to invite the candidates to review their closing statements. And Tim, you're first.
I'm confident that my experience as a teacher, coach, father, and lifelong member of this community will serve me well as a member of this Board of Education. Our school is the center of the Avon community. There are children in our schools who are going to grow up to become adults who also choose to raise their children right here because they learned from teachers that they respected and looked up to, who taught them respected and looked up to, who taught them in the classrooms and on the playing fields and the courts, on stage, performing plays and band concerts and chorus concerts. But we have to make sure that is the experience that our students are having, and we have to make sure they all feel safe and protected and cared about. I don't want Avon Central School to be the same for my kids as it was for me. I want it to be better, and I loved going to school here. The only way we're going to do that is if we have transparency from leadership that listens to our community, to the parents of those children, and to the teachers and faculty and staff who who work with them every day. Thank you very much again, and God bless.
Samara?
Avon has been my home for my whole life, and that is why I'm here today, to support all of you and to listen to what you have to say, to step up and help foster a safe learning experience for generations to come. It is my goal to make sure I'm staying educated and informed with what is happening within the district and in the classroom, to communicate with other board members and make sure we are making the right calls on the most important topics, to listen to what the faculty and staff have as concerns, and to ensure we make progress towards closing their pay gap, to make sure we continue to support our students and help them grow into young adults, to listen and address their concerns, and to continue to acknowledge and support their achievements. I hope after today I have earned your support, and I would be honored to be your next board member. Thank you.
Steve?
I hope that tonight I was able to convince you that I am fit to serve on the board, more so as a fresh set of eyes and as someone who is eager to listen, eager to learn, and eager to act. The turnout here tonight is incredible, and the community passion is palpable. Whether or not I'm fortunate enough to win this seat, I'd like to impress on you one piece of advice. As a taxpaying community, we are all shareholders in the school system, but as parents, we we are all far greater stakeholders in trusting our most prized assets, our children, to the Avon Central School System. I encourage involvement in the PTA, attend school board meetings, and hear what they have to say, and also make your voice heard. I know it's a tad cliche, but be the change you want to see. And finally, there's one last question that I have yet to answer. It starts with one of my phrases, but what if? But what if you elect me to the board? Well, you'll get someone who will use his abilities, values, skills, and leadership to make investments in your child's future. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Sharon?
I mentioned earlier, you know, we're we're new to Avon, but I'm certainly not new to teamwork, hard work, and trying to make a difference in this community. I I'd be honored to have your vote May 16th because I I really want to create a board that works for you, that works for the teachers, that makes the Avon School District just the wonderful place and continues to be a wonderful place that it is. And so, yeah, you know, we're stakeholders, each and every one of us in this room. And, you know, my children are going to spend the next eight years of their life here in this school district, so I have a vested interest in this. I know you do, too, and I'd really be honored for your vote on May 16th.
I would like to thank everyone for voting for me in the past. One of the things I do like to see, I know Sharon has seen it too, but graduation is always the best part of the show for me. I stand there and see those kids walk across the stage. It's just amazing. And I know we can do more with, you know, with the situation, with the money as far as, I'm sorry.
Rodney?
And just say that with my 24 years' experience, I believe I'm very qualified to continue on. We learned a lot throughout those years. We've made mistakes. There's no question about it. We've learned from those mistakes, and we built relationships with all of our groups. And there's still work to do, and I'm committed to do whatever's needed to do to bring our district to the next level. Thank you.
Well, this concludes our question and answers and our following statements. And I'd like to thank all of the candidates for being here, the audience, and the PTA. Have a good evening, everyone.